The fire department is all here. Not worried about the place burning down? Let me call the meeting to order June 5th at 7:03 PM. Chrissy, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Alba?
Yeah.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Here.
Trustee Porter?
Here.
Trustee Kunkel?
Here.
Trustee Van Colly?
Here.
And Trustee Broccalino?
Here.
How about this? Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a motion to accept the agenda. So move.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. Which, which one?
Do you hear a microphone on? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's good. Me too.
My computer is doing something really kind of stupid with this.
This is my laptop.
I couldn't get the PDF up. 787.
You have to say it though. Can you say both of them?
So it's 787, 784, 7810.
Great, thank you.
Very good.
Can I say both?
Yes, please.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
And Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentations. Who's first? Mike Fiskone, please step to the front. Is your family here?
They are.
Good evening, good evening. It is my honor to present this proclamation to Mike Fiskone, who I think was on the fire district when you hired him. It was another lifetime. Whereas firefighter/paramedic Mike Fiskone is retiring from the Village of Hanover Park on June 17th, 2025, after having served 27 years with the Village of Hanover Park Fire Department. And whereas the fire paramedic Mike Fiskone served as a part-time firefighter for seven years before being appointed as a full-time firefighter on December 16th, 2004. And whereas firefighter Mike Fiskone is known as a dedicated individual who has served in the fire department beyond his assigned duties as our fire investigations coordinator and as a team leader with the DuPage County Fire Investigations Task Force. And whereas firefighter Mike Fiskone has been awarded numerous certifications, including the Illinois Licensed Paramedic, Advanced Technician Firefighter, Fire Officer One, Fire Instructor Two, Hazardous Material Technician, Hazardous Materials Incident Command, Vehicle and Machinery Technician, and Illinois Office of the State Fire Marshal Fire Investigator. You didn't sleep on duty, did you? And whereas in his service to our community, firefighter Mike Fiskone has been awarded one Critical Care Citation and two Company Citations for his actions and high performance at emergency scenes over his career, including his company's help in rescuing five people trapped in an apartment building. Now, therefore I, Rodney S. Craig, Village President of Village Hanover Park, do hereby join elected officials and the people of the Village of Hanover Park in expressing our deepest appreciation to firefighter Mike Fiskone for his loyal and dedicated service. I extend my personal best wishes upon his retirement for continued success in the pursuit of health, happiness, and future endeavors. And Mike, it's my honor. I was around, I think, your whole career. Maybe I've been around too long. Anyway, Mike, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate that.
My best to your family.
Thank you.
And we're gonna get a photo together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the board would love to shake your hand. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Can we have his crew come up? We'll take a picture with the crew. That's why we have a chief. Great suggestions. Well done. Hand your camera off to somebody. All right, is everybody here you want here?
Yeah, for real.
Okay. Well done, well done. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we're good, Mark. In Hanover Park, we have a name for this. We're gonna do it till we get it right. Well, thank you, thank you all. Okay. Now, Lisa, would you like to come up with your family? I've known Lisa for more than a few years. I think Lisa's living in Hanover Park. Born here, right?
Yeah, I was born here, yeah.
Yeah, we tore your house down, right?
Yes.
Yes. I know, I know things I shouldn't.
It wasn't your fault.
What a dedicated, caring employee Lisa is. Never afraid to tell the mayor. I shouldn't cash that check. Lisa, it's an honor. You've earned this retirement and I wish you and your family well. Whatever you do, stay safe. Whereas Lisa Tempere is retiring from the Village of Hanover Park on June 27th, 2025, after having served 30 years with the village's finance department. And whereas Lisa Tempere grew up in Hanover Park, Ontarioville, before it became incorporated. And her uncle was the first village president of Hanover Park. He was not the one that went to jail.
No.
No. We have that experience. Whereas Lisa was hired as a water billing technician and started with the village on November 1st, 1994. And whereas Lisa Tempere was promoted in June 1997 to account technician and has served in that role for 28 years, where she's been focused and detail-oriented processing over 106,000 checks during her career. And whereas Lisa Tempere is a dedicated individual who has demonstrated outstanding dedication, professionalism, and commitment to public service. And whereas Lisa Tempere has played a key role in the successful completion of annual audits, financial reporting, and contributing to the village's compliance with state and federal fiscal standards. Now therefore I, Rodney S. Craig, Village President of Village Hanover Park, do hereby join elected officials and the people of the Village of Hanover Park in expressing our deepest appreciation to Lisa Tempere for her loyal and dedicated service. I extend my personal best wishes upon her retirement for her continued success in the pursuit of health, happiness, and worldwide travel. Which is future endeavors, right? Congratulations. If the microphone will travel. You're gonna have a tough shoes to fill. Nice to have you all. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. You get a good one? Go find me a support. We're gonna have a photo with the fire.
Love it.
All right, come on. Say it between your toes. All right. Hold it steady, Penny. All right, thank you all, thank you all. Okay, I can sit down. I can give this to the police chief. We were just announced today, right?
Oh, the Traffic Safety Challenge.
Traffic Safety Recognition. Say what it is.
Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge, the Hanover Park PD took first place. And a lot of effort by Officer Penny and SCP.
We'll see that award in August.
August.
Yeah, and then we're gonna bring the whole police department in and have a cupcake. Well, the budget, you know, might be tight by now. So this is a proclamation, whereas every day 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas cities across the nation, including the Village of Hanover Park, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Doing a good job. Whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves or others. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we've seen gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 6th, tomorrow, the first Friday in June in 2025, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 6th, people across the United States will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violent victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore I, Rodney S. Craig, President of Village Hanover Park, declare the first day of June 6th, first Friday in June 6th, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Chief. Photo op, photo op. Who'll do this till we get it right? Thank you. Okay, so the next item is completion of the workshop.
You wanna do it now or after?
How long, how much time do you need? You wanna do it now? Let's get it done. Juliana?
So this is continuation. If you wanna put up. So one of the items on the agenda, the C V is the non-AR related development. This is a project that is being proposed across the street from Ontarioville Plaza. It's in the TIF district. There's two items in the packet related to this project and one of them was the Lakota Agreement, which was pulled off the agenda. But there's also the Spaceco Agreement that was on the consent agenda. That's the engineering portion of this project. This is on the Merrick site. It is Lakota who designed the Ontarioville Plaza, came in and did this several conceptual designs and this is the one that we're recommending. It continues, for example, the overhead tivali lighting and expands the event space that we have available. What we've been finding is that we're spilling over onto this vacant parcel already for our events, so the tree lighting, et cetera. And there are some things that the Ontarioville Plaza, what we think is great, does not provide. So this would provide some pavilion or some pergolas along the left west side of the property that we could have tables under there for like business after hours and some of those events that we try to use makeshift tents and, and pull them together. This would be structural overhead pergola space that could be seating when it's not an event, but could be programmed for an event. There's also, as you can see, a connection, a continuation of the sidewalk that goes from the park that was built as part of Phase 1. It goes behind the executive house through this parcel and then continues behind the animal care center to connect with the new proposed Metro Plaza, which is part of a different project. But this allows for that walkability rather than having to come across the tracks and walk all the way down to Ontarioville. It'll allow you to walk along and connect to the park. There's also part of the proposal is to have some interactive swings and different things so that it's not quite a playground, but it's an artistic feature, but also is something where families, if they wanna come, sit down. We're gonna have some movable furniture in the area. The DuPage County has agreed to help us fund the movable artwork seating. So they have provided us a grant for that, for part of that project. Again, we think that we're already spilling over into this area. It is in the TIF and it is an allowable use of TIF funds. So what's on the board agenda this evening is an agreement with Lakota to actually do the design, the next level of design of it, as well as Spaceco to do the engineering of the site. They would have the same material, complimentary or same materials as the Ontarioville Plaza and some of the seat wall would be similar to what we have in the park. So it would tie that whole, whole area together. When we built Phase 1, we did put the planters and streetscapes in, in front of this parcel in anticipation that this would be programmed out in, in this manner in the future. So there's no dry aisle or anything into that space. I'll stop there for a second, I have one more piece. But are there any questions about this?
I'd like to ask, have we considered or explored the possibility of relocating the animal hospital? Since that seems to be right in the middle of our village center plans and relocating the animal hospital to another location to give us access to all of that right into the Metro Plaza? Has that possibility been discussed and is it even feasible?
Well, to begin with, the village did use TIF funds to help the animal hospital locate there in the first place, so they, we helped.
That was before we, we had this, this, this other grand plan?
We have not, we did have a lot of discussions over the years about them expanding onto the Merrick property. The, the business has since sold and so there is not that interest in expanding. We really think that this could complement the animal care facility in that there would, you know, we can do some pet-related artwork and activity amenities with the walking path. The animal care facility brings in a lot of people to the area. We don't have a lot of businesses along there right now that are bringing customers and businesses or customers and residents and stuff to that area. So I think it's, it's an activated use.
But is it a business, is it the type of business that's consistent with the community that we're trying to build there? I mean, sure, and, and I'm a pet lover, you know, and, and I get the need for an animal care facility in the hospital. But I'm just thinking if we're looking at building this into an area that attracts community residents where we might have boutiques and restaurants and, and other things that create a viable downtown feeling, is it feasible that we could find another location for the animal hospital that would fit their needs but also give us access to that full plot of land moving into the proposed Metro Plaza? It's just, you know, before we go any further, I'd just like to know if that's been considered and, and is it possible to be a consideration?
It has not been considered in that we've always spoke to it as an amenity in the area as well as there is a residential development that we'll be talking about in a couple meetings from now that the whole residence with pets and having pet care right nearby, we've really tried to tie the two together.
So the answer is no, we haven't.
We have not done that, no. I, I'm not saying it can't be, but they're a viable business that has been, that meets the zoning requirement.
We don't wanna shut them down, I'm just saying if we can move them. But that's, I'm done. I just wanted to, to raise that and see if it's been considered.
I always liked the idea that the back of the animal care thing is where they put the dogs out and, you know, you get docking, barking, talking, barking dogs. It's probably a good location for that. So, but I think our amenities around animal care and initiatives in the future that support our care for animals, I think it kind of works into our future things. So it's a good thought, but I can't imagine what it costs to replace that building, you know, I mean, the trade-off, so. Thanks for.
So there's another view of this.
Before you do that, can you clarify what the red is? What are those red dots?
So the bushes and flowering trees and some kind of, it's like landscaping that's gonna buffer that other area, gathering area from the tracks to the, the event space. So both sound and visual, it's a backdrop of.
The six red dots?
Well, they're trees.
Oh.
I, I think this is, again, this is conceptual. What's on the agenda, Lakota, would be to refine this, pick the materials, pick the, you know, the actual layout of the, of the space.
All right. And then I notice on the agenda that Lakota was listed as non-applicable.
That, that box just means that none of the above apply.
Yes, so isn't Lakota Native American? So did they say that they wanted to be marked as not applicable?
It's just the last name.
I, I don't know that they're Native American. Did you see that on a different?
The Lakota group? I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, was, was, did the group request that they be marked non-applicable?
So that box is, we check to see whether they are, meet any of those criteria and if non-applicable is checked, then they don't meet that criteria.
Okay, okay, so they, okay.
None of the above apply?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a request.
Yes.
I'd like to see a proliferation as we do these type of things of our Hanover Park, Lily.
We have a lot of them around town.
It's, it's, hello. I'd like it, Lily, I'd like to see it develop, split, grow. The mayor likes to share them with others.
So noted.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a question? That's me. Why is this shaped like that?
So it is, if you look on the other side, can we go back to the other one? It's a continuation of kind of the design that way. But what we, what we had discussed was we didn't want it to be like a sidewalk that just went straight across and that people forgot that there was a roadway in between and then there's a planter box there. So it's just to provide some green space and some architectural interest and it's gonna have the, again, the lighting down the middle. Yeah, the overhead lighting. They've showed us examples of a lot of different things that they could put in materials in there. I think that's the next phase to decide what, what the community really would like to see in there.
I've got a question. Sorry, you're still going, go ahead.
Really quickly, the, I don't know what to call it. So where the red dots are, is that, is, would that be enough space for, say, and would, would that be enough space and would there be enough of a backdrop for, for like a wedding to take place?
Sure, well, we're talking about putting, what's been suggested is a lot of communities are having a fire pit type of amenity and so that's what's been suggested there with seat, movable seating around it. So it's not gonna, you wouldn't be, if we put a fire pit-ish feature in there, I don't know how you'd do a wedding, I mean, somebody could get married. know how you'd do a wedding, I mean, somebody could get married out there, but I don't, it's not going to be movable.
The fire isn't going to be-
The fire pit will not be movable.
This looks like a nice amenity.
Perfect for smores.
Perfect for holiday smores, yes.
Shouldn't we maybe consider that, though?
I think that they could, they could put a backdrop in front of it, and then still have that, all that space. We're not, I, it, I'm sure it could be made to be done, I, that wasn't the idea when it was being designed, to be honest.
Okay, that's-
Well, crosswalks all the way down here, the white dotted lines, ones around by the corner, and ones all the way down by the metro line. Should we put one going across from the plaza, over across to where that's at?
We can have the engineering term-
Kind of make everybody go to one area.
Look at that. Yeah, we'll have the engineering term.
Just kind of having them all over the street. Okay, that's all I had.
Any more questions?
Any other questions of the board? I mean, again, it's on the agenda as two items, one that's on the consent agenda, one that's been pulled off.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, and we'll, did it get pulled on the consent?
Yes, one did, one did.
All right, we'll talk about it again. All right, Town Hall session, Tom.
Tom Clark. Come on up.
You have 30 seconds.
You want 30 seconds?
No, go ahead, Tom.
All right.
I, I know you too well.
Okay, hang on, everybody, we're going to go quickly here. My name is Tom Clark, and my address is written down for the clerk's record. I'm a resident of this village and a member of the Development Commission, but it should be known that for tonight, there is no intended connection with that of committee business. That said, Honorable Mayor, Trustees, Madam Clerk, Staff, and fellow residents, if I may, I'd like to extend a remark or two on tonight's agenda item 7 Alpha 10 concerning the passage of the quote, "Ordinance Regarding a Municipal Grocery Retailer's Occupation Tax and a Municipal Grocery Service Occupation Tax," unquote. Well, as I understand it, the raw interpretation of this issue concludes with a 1% tax on all grocery items purchased in Hanover Park. Since taxation of any sort is a burden upon one's own wallet and therefore achievements, I think it merits some examination. Item one, I couldn't help but notice that item 7 Alpha 10 was on tonight's program as a consent agenda item. Now, it seems to me that if this new or replacement tax is such a great idea, all trustees would be eager to talk of its virtuous attributes, followed by an individual vote under the most cheerful veil of enthusiasm. Much praise for the trustee that yanked this item from the C.A. hanger. Thank you. I am no expert on the rules for written agendas, but I don't think that the utility of consent agenda items is best demonstrated when the subject of tax revenue makes their way to the dais. Item two, there is a popular argument that this grocery tax is simply maintaining an existing tax and not placing additional tax burdens upon the village's residents. The validity in that argument may not quite satisfy the ivory soap test. The state of Illinois is indeed eliminating its version of the statewide 1% tax on groceries effective January 1st. However, depending upon the media source, new tax revenues between 800 million and 1 billion will be introduced. So however one wants to frame it, a grocery tax is adding to what seems to be an endless appetite for revenue at all levels of state government. Item three, if I had been roaming the village's website correctly, it appears that the 2025 village budget was a little north of $90 million, which is to the village's credit. It represents a sizable reduction from the previous year's figures. Assuming this grocery tax brings in around $500,000, this amount would constitute a bit more than one-half of 1% of the village's total intake, again gauged for 2025. Tough question, but can another half percent in savings be found? Which brings me to item four, so what to do in the near term? Just saying no to this grocery tax may be quite a challenge, perhaps even more so to the newer trustees, and by the way, thank you for your service to the village. Taxes are not much of a winning proposition, so you could consider the following, assuming attorney approval. If you pass this ordinance tonight, do so with a firm sunset clause, in that the grocery tax ends on January 1st, 2027. In the meantime, yes, find further ways to review projected revenues and cut spending. It is a profound challenge, but it would not be the boards and staff's first miracle. If you're simply not able to pull it off, detail why, and surviving the appropriate debate, continue to pass yearly authorizations of this grocery tax, bearing in mind, of course, the voter scrutiny. In finishing up, I'm going to leave the rails of this discussion a little bit, in that there is little doubt in my mind that the state continues to struggle in collecting enough revenues against what elected officials think is necessary. But Illinois is regrettably a case study as to what happens when the amount of spending, tax collection, and regulations becomes excessive. In the year 2000, Illinois had 72, I'm sorry, Illinois had 22, 22 Electoral College votes. Now they're only 19. I'll leave you to fill in the rest. A grocery tax is only a small element in the larger picture, but I suspect at least part of Hanover Park's revenue challenges stem from the habits emanating from Springfield. As an individual, I can talk with my representative, and that is a good thing. A more potent refresher, though, would be that sourced from a large collective of local elected officials, with the consequences of taxation, unfunded mandates, proper free-market practices, and efficient state-level governing at the forefront of any discussion. Now, to the extent that this is taking place, I am grateful. For I'm of the belief that the state of Illinois, or as the state of Illinois might go, so will go its cities and villages, and Hanover Park is one such village, and a fine one at that. This will then conclude my remarks for tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Village President's report. Well, I hit some notes here somewhere. I have been quite busy with our legislators, as states pushing a couple billion dollars in new taxes on, on, across the board. One of the initiatives on transit did not pass. The transit initiative was heavily burdened with new taxes on municipal government. I'm taking some leadership role on that to, with a number of mayors across the northeast Illinois, to speak to that issue. We've been pushed to the curb, the mayors have, and it's not sitting well with any of us, given the outcomes to support the CTA based on new taxes for home sales and, and other initiatives. I can't imagine the state canceling the grocery tax and then implementing a grocery delivery tax, but that's, that's all not approved, it's still hanging out there, so mayors are going to step up and speak to the issues that we're being confronted with. Tom, I appreciate your perspective on the grocery tax. That's a hell of a lot of money for us to try to recoup. We've made some dedicated commitments to this community around replacing streets and initiatives that apply to services, and there's no alternative to waive that off. It's not a new tax, it's, we're just going to sustain what we have in place. City Chicago just realized this week, they're, they're taking a hit at 18, I think it was 18 million dollars, they're passing, they're continuing the grocery tax. Most of our communities around us are doing that. A couple of them that are not are implementing a home rule 1% tax, which is going to be quite a bit more than what is the grocery tax. The hardest thing we ever have to do is to pass a tax. This is not passing a tax, this is sustaining an element that was in place that keeps us level. We've gone nine years without raising taxes. It's not a pretty thing what we do, but we've had to do that in the past for sustainability. Our EAV is way above our neighboring village, I think it's a tax rate. It's still very high compared to our neighboring villages. So, we've been working to bring that down, we're on our pathway, new developments are coming because of our efforts in that matter, and I encourage that we'll continue on that pathway. Bringing that tax rate down is important to us. Still, we're still not on where I'd like to be, so it's important for us. We've got to sustain what we have, but we just can't walk away from it. It's not an easy thing to do. So with that, I'll move by omniscient items on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
The motion is second.
So those items are 7A1 through and including 7A3, 7A5 and 7A6, 7A7 through-
7A8.
7A8 and 7A9, 7A11 and 7A12.
Next page.
Yeah, the next page, two. Very good.
No, there's no consent on the next page.
Okay, with that, Christie Caldero.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
Trustee Broccolino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
And Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 74, motion to approve the proposal from the Lakota group to provide design services for Phase Two of the Ontarioville Plaza in the amount of $78,550, and authorize the village manager to execute the necessary documents. We have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion to second, discussion? I think we did that.
We, we, we discussed it, I voiced my concern about the animal hospital and possible relocation, and, and I submit that for the record.
Okay, and-
Yeah, my questions are answered as well. I would, I guess appreciate us considering that fireplace, and maybe even looking at putting it across the street, just because when I think about the things that we don't have in town, there, there is nowhere in town where you can get married, either inside or outside. So that, that would just be my one consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, no, I'm just going to say, my concern is that 10 years down the road, we're going to look at what's happening, or we're going to say, doggone it, why didn't we, we take this space and do something with it? You know, looking forward, it might be serving a purpose today, but I'm thinking 10 years when maybe, you know, none of us are here, or a new board is here, I don't want us to rue the day that we, we didn't at least consider it.
Yeah, I remember, that was a TIF initiative, and to get the hospital to stay in town, and that was a big deal at the time. So, thank you, Herb, for that thought. Christie Caldero.
Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Broccolino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
And Trustee Porter?
No.
Thank you. 787, motion to establish a purchase order to Foster Coats Sales, Inc., for a 2027 Ford Horton ambulance in the amount not to exceed $480,046. Approve a prepayment of $100,000 to secure pricing, and authorize the village manager to execute the necessary documents. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, I, I pulled this, first of all, let me just state that I highly commend the fire department chief and the village manager for handling the resources so that we can purchase this vehicle in the, in the advanced planning to make this happen. You guys do a tremendous job in, in doing that to reduce the, the strain on, on our local budget, and, and our annual budget. My concern, and, and my question is that we're using taxpayer dollars nevertheless to pay for this ambulance, and as I understand it, residents, when they use our ambulance services, are then charged a fee for their use of the ambulances if they were to call and be transported to a local hospital. And I know that came before the board a few years ago, and we approved that, and, and we did it, but hindsight is always 100%, as they say. And, and I'm just wondering, as a resident of, of the community, when I know my tax dollars are paying for this ambulance, this beautiful piece of equipment that will be a tremendous service to our community, I'm, I'm a little uneasy when I turn around and tell our residents, yeah, you can use this, but we're going to charge you a fee to use this that your tax dollars paid for, but now we got to charge you a fee to use this to transport you in the case of an emergency to the local hospital. And that's my uneasiness, not with the purchase of, of the ambulance at, at all, but with how we are charging our residents for the use of, of this vehicle when they're transported to the hospital. It's a, it's a fee, and one of the things that I'm concerned with is that we have so many, we don't, you know, we pat ourselves on the back for not raising fees, I mean, for not raising taxes, but yet we have so many fees on different things that, you know, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other sometimes, when you, when you look at it, from that person sitting at their kitchen table and figuring out, you know, their budget, and, and how they're going to make ends meet when you have these expenses. So, that's my concern, and I don't know, Chief, do you know what that charge is now that we're, we're assessing residents when they use the ambulance service?
It's different, it's based on the level of service, so it's in our cost recovery ordinance. It's been part of the ordinances since the village took the fire department in 2000. I can say even before that, we've always charged ambulance billing fees. It's very customary and usual for anyone that operates an ambulance, not only in Illinois, throughout the nation. Our fees are based on that level of service, like I said. I don't know the exact dollar amounts, I'd have to get back to you on that, but we have a BLS rate, we have a non-transport rate, we have an ALS 1 and an ALS 2. Again, that's tiered, so that basically when our, our level of service is higher, we charge a little bit more money for that. I can share that we have not raised those fees and those rates for quite some time, we haven't looked at it. And it is our proposal that in the next strategic plan, our plan is to look and focus at those rates and try to see what we can do with them. And when I say that, is right now, we are, our rates are billed to your insurance company, they're not billed directly to you. And what we do, though, is we do have a financial policy that we balance bill, and if your insurance does not cover the full amount of that rate, we charge that back to the, to the person that is the patient. But your insurance is supposed to cover first anything for those costs. We're actually going to look at a proposal that might increase revenue while taking away the need to have to balance bill residents. We're, we're trying to analyze that, to try to get exactly what you're speaking to as a goal of ours, to not have to increase fees out of pocket to our residents. But it, it is usual and customary, and that fee goes to your insurance company first.
Don't you, don't you also limit the fee to what Medicare will pay for people over 65?
Correct. If you're on Medicare, that's set by the Medicare wages, we're only reimbursed-
And you accept it.
And we have to accept that. Same with Medicaid. And Medicaid, we're part of the GEMT program, which tries to supplement that gap of funding of our cost of service versus what Medicaid actually reimburses us at.
And for those residents who may have a subpar insurance policy, but yet need the need for those services, and may see a bigger share of that cost coming back to them because of, of the lack of insurance coverage, what, what happens with those individuals?
I can't speak to each individual, because it is based on your insurance coverage. I can share, though, that there's a survey that we participate in, and annually, multiple fire departments, like over 50, report to the Neighborville Fire Department, and they publish a study of what everyone's fees are, and we are definitely below average of what is being charged for the same services.
And for the individual that gets that bill for the uncovered portion of that fee, and find themselves not in a position to pay that, what happens to that individual?
They work with the finance department, and there's many different ways to work onto payment plans, or to work out what that is long-term for the individual.
But again, we are looking, planning to look at going forward, maybe finding a way that that one be charged back.
Absolutely, that's my intent, that, that's going to be something that I'm going to bring forward to try to study and present, to see if that's financially viable, to maintain our revenue levels, and hopefully actually increase revenue, and have to take away the burden of what's called a balanced billing practice, which has been in place since we started billing for ambulance services.
And I know it's come before the board before, and, and I know we voted to approve a certain level of, of, of payment, but like, as I mentioned, you know, as these hairs get gr- But like, as I mentioned, you know, as these hairs get greier on my head and start looking at things a little bit differently. So I just wanted to, to bring that up. But I'm glad to hear that in the strategic plan, you're going to look at that and see if you can address that to maybe alleviate some of that pressure on our, on our residents when it comes to those ambulance fees. Thank you.
I can't tell you how many times I've sat through that discussion. Thank you, Herb. Kristi?
Actually, I, I wanted to add.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mayor. Thank you. So one of the things that happened to me while I was going through this packet was I ended up going down the rabbit hole on not just this ambulance, but fire equipment across the board. And Chief and I had a conversation earlier about some of the things that I found, one of which is that large private equity firms have gotten involved in the sourcing, production and sales of fire equipment across the nation. And they found a choke point that they then could use to increase pricing and delay delivery of fire equipment. And that group is called Rev Group, which Chief and I talked about earlier. And I was just hoping that we could continue to look for sources for higher fire equipment that doesn't play into the, you know, play into the hands of that particular private equity group and what they're trying to do to fire equipment. So I, I know that they're trying to increase their profitability and increase their prices and delay delivery because in a lot of contracts, that allows them to increase the price by simply delaying the actual delivery of the equipment. And, and I consider that unfair practice. And I want to make sure that we don't fall into supporting that, that unfair practice, even though we might. So if we're planning out ahead of time, we're looking at where we're sourcing equipment and we're making sure we're not supporting that, that, that play essentially to monopolize firefighting equipment and ambulances across the board. Like to make sure that we focus on that going forward.
That sounds good. Chief, you understand all of them?
Absolutely. I can say.
Okay. There's greed out there and we all know it. Any other questions? For the chief? Kristi caller roll.
Okay, seven A seven. Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven A ten.
Thank you, seven A ten. Move to pass an ordinance amending chapter ninety-four taxation of the municipal code for the Village of Hanover Park by adding there to a new article XV-one municipal grocery retailer occupational tax and municipal grocery service occupational tax.
It's article sixteen.
Article sixteen.
Article sixteen.
That's not written here. Oh, article sixteen. Thank you.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk call the roll.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
And Trustee Bencholi?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Seven A thirteen, motion to pass an ordinance approving eleven exceptions and a master plan development in the V C, that's the Village Center Mixed Use Core District for an eight-acre multifamily development at the northwest corner of Barrington Road and Lake Street. We have a motion? So move.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Discussion?
And, and just to clarify, going back to the hybrid and corner living, given that this is the first time that a structure of this nature would be built in a community that you oversee, would you be willing to provide the board at a later date renderings that would include a more modern feel for the hybrid and corner living plots? I say that because, you know, you said you're, you're in fifty communities. And what I was going to ask is, could you just show me a picture of where it's been built so that I can get a better visual? But.
I see a thumbs up.
So those renderings are possible?
Step up to the microphone in case there's questions. Thank you.
Hello again, Jason Kimbitzus. Sure, yeah, we can do that. I mean, we can, we can look, I can, I can give, we can give you more perspective as to where we've built those and what they look like. And then we can look at trying to create a more modern aesthetic to the building.
Okay. But, but, so just to clarify, this type though hasn't been built anywhere else?
The hybrid building has been built. We've built it in multiple communities. The lower one that has the, called the corner living, has not been built.
That's the new one?
Yeah, that's the two-story one.
Okay. And so you'd be able to provide renderings for both?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
I could stand there for any other.
Okay, thank you for your time. I thought your, your presentation was good. I'm always concerned when we have a whole bunch of exceptions.
Yeah.
My original goal was to have an eight-story building there. It's a high point in the town, but I had to give up on that. Whatever it is, we do need the development. I think it's going to serve Hanover Park well.
Great, thank you.
We have a community with, you know, we need that, we need the freshness of this. So I'm looking forward to the development and conscientious caring for those that live there. I know it's right by the train station, the TOD component. It's got to fit in multiple ways. And I think there's federal grants that close to the TOD for electric cars, you know, plugging them in or whatever. So there's those things that are out there that should be under your purview to research. So thank you very much. Any other questions, anyone?
I'd say thank Emily.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to this, Mayor. I don't have questions for Jason, but I did want to make a few comments. First of all, we spent many, many hours on this project. And as board liaison, I got to observe some of that. So the work that the Development Commission did was exhaustive. And, and all of these questions were drilled down on during those many hours to great depth and explored. And, and the care and dedication and concern that the Development Commission shown throughout that process was impressive. That, that was a lot of time and effort. And, and I really want to make sure that those guys realize the appreciation from, from the rest of the board on behalf of the residents. Because they were asking questions of, of all this team and, and kept them on their heels the whole time with where sidewalks would go and, well, just all the millions of questions and all the exceptions. Also, Schuber and Alex and all the homework that they did, making sure that, you know, from, from the perspective of, of the staff side and, and all the staff work that they did. And, and of course, Chief, if you could relate to Chief Capella, all, all the hours that he spent also observing the deliberations and the questions and the homework that all those groups were doing to make sure that this project could get into a presentable format for this evening. And, and I understand that there's a lot more work to go. And, and I think that there's going to be changes going forward. But each of those exceptions were argued and questioned and explained and circled around again, and now we've done it again, circled around through every single piece of it again. That, that's great. And, and as, as a resident, I want to say that I appreciate that because this is right in the center of town. And this is really important. And I'm, I'm still interested to see and observe at, at the rest of this process if, if there's benefit to all of us from, from what happens. I'm interested to see what, what it does to, to our E A D. I'm interested to see what it does with people that are living there. You know, for the autumn list, for me, a lot of this has been a learning process. And I'm interested to see transit-oriented development actually result in people that live there and they get on the train and they go to Chicago and they come back. I, I want to see those things happen. I'm, I'm really interested to see it. And, and even the question that Trustee Porter had about where those people are going to cross the road, right? We talked about that pedestrian crosswalk at great length based on the busy aspect of this particular intersection, which for us is a big part of our lives, you know, just living in this area, the intersection of Barrington Road and Lake Street. It's just something you have to deal with almost on a daily basis to do and not go anywhere. And, and so overall, oh, and I, I think I'm forgetting Public Works guy, John, right? He was in a lot of those meetings. Yeah, I hate that I'm already forgetting people that spent so many hours working on this and asking these questions so many times. I, I have a little empathy as, as well for, for this crew because they've heard these questions so many times already and had to go through this in a circular format over and over and over again. So I just want to make sure that that wasn't lost in this, all the hours and time that we spent on this, just to get it to this, to this part. So thank you to everyone that spent all that exhaustive time and effort being in those meetings. I appreciate it.
I want to just say, of all the Development Commission liaisons that I've appointed over the years, you just exceeded them all. Thank you very much.
All I did was just sit there.
To respect the work of the staff and those developers that come before us and the time and the hours they put in, I'm not as nice as you are. So I have, I have crazy questions, but thank you. I thought that was respectable and kind. Any other comments by the board? I'm looking forward to seeing this develop. Like I said, it's not the eight-story building I wanted. I wanted a penthouse suite so I could see the downtown of Chicago, but it's not in my cards. So with that, Kristi, would you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
No.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Thank you. And you have your direction, I guess. Keep moving on.
Thank you very much.
Where the heck are we?
Fourteen.
Seven A what?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Move to pass an ordinance modifying chapter two, section two dash one seventy-two of the municipal code to remove the requirement that the village manager be a resident of the village. So we're finally fixing that one.
A motion?
In a second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion?
Yes. Does this also remove, make this gender neutral in, in referring to?
I think it did.
Yeah, in the packet, it said that all references to he would become referenced to village manager.
Just for this section, the rest of the, our ordinances continue with he.
And we have a strategic plan coming up, but we want to address that. So I'm glad we fixed that one.
Okay.
Okay. Kristi caller roll.
Trustee Bencholi?
No.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Thank you. All righty. Seven A fifteen, move to approve warrant. We've cleared the room, only Thomas left. Seven A fifteen, move to approve the warrant six oh five to twenty twenty-five with the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, thirty-two dollars and nine cents.
So move.
Second.
The motion is second, discussion. Hearing done, Trustee caller roll.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
And Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven A sixteen, move to approve warrant paid in advance, five eight twenty twenty-five through five twenty-nine twenty twenty-five in the amount of one million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-seven, one million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. So move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Hearing done, Kristi caller roll.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
And Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven A seventeen, move to approve April twenty twenty-five P cards in amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and one cent.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Kristi caller roll.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bencholi?
Yes.
And Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Thank you. Village managers report to Leanna.
Just a second here. So we sent, Sue sent out a list of all of the meetings that are coming up. We have a lot of additional meetings for the comp plan, for the strategic plan. We're moving the board meeting on the nineteenth to the twenty-third following the strategic plan presentation of the citizen survey results that has been completed. So the consultant will be here to outline for you what the residents said in response to those questions. And then in addition to that, we have then a lot of budget meetings that are coming up. So just please, Sue will put those on your calendar, but just make sure you're looking at that so, to plan accordingly. I did have one calendar question. It doesn't need to be decided today, but, or tonight, but in the past, from time to time, we, when the village board meeting has fallen, when the I M L conferences, there's been a request to cancel that meeting, but we haven't always done that. So I just need to understand whether this year for planning purposes, if we're going to move forward with that meeting, if all, if there's going to be several of you going or if you're not and you're going to do something else, then, then we can have a meeting.
When do you need to know?
Um.
Would it be the September eighteenth meeting?
It would be the second meeting in September.
Well, I would certainly be there. I'm not aware of holders are attending. I always encourage board members to attend.
So it sounds like both you, Mayor, and Trustee Porter will be attending. The concern's always been as to whether we have a forum. We just need to plan the agenda items to the, and make sure we put them on the other meeting agendas then. So think about it. If you think that there's a chance that we should cancel that, we'll just put it on a future agenda to have you cancel that meeting.
Yeah, I would recommend, yeah, I would recommend two newest trustees would be well-served in attending the I M L meeting.
Okay, they're, they'll make up their, they'll make up their minds soon. But we always value.
I'll plan to put it on the next agenda. Do you want, and we'll look to see whether we have to reschedule it or if we can just cancel it.
Can I request in, can we, I know Sue puts all the dates on our calendar, but can she just compile them all and put them on one email?
I think she did. I thought she did that.
I haven't seen that come up.
Okay, we'll resend.
Just with all the dates changing, I know that it may be going out a couple weeks ago, but if you could just resend that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Um...
Anything else, Juliana?
But did she send out, is there already information on the I M L conference for September?
No, I just saw it today for the first time, the date, so that was what raised the question. Um, so, uh, based on the, um, the, the approval of the residency, that clarified some information so we can move forward with finalizing, having M G T finalize the ad for the village manager replacement. Um, they needed that piece of information in order to finish that ad. So, um, I will send to you the brochure that they're planning on sending out for recruitment, um, for village manager. So we have a full four months, uh, before my last day, so that should give them enough time to bring, uh, to advertise and recruit and bring in candidates. But if there's any question on the process, I'd be happy to answer that. We're just kind of following the same process that was used for me as well as several of the department heads that have been here.
That's very good. I like that process and, uh, we'll be presenting that shortly. Village clerk's report?
Are, so there any questions?
Oh.
Any questions about that? Um, I, I just wanted to make sure you knew that that was moving forward and that we're trying to have at least the process well on its way before I leave.
Um, I just, I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, since the, uh, you're, you're leaving will happen, uh, will we have completed the budget process or where will we be in the budget process, uh, as it pertains to your last day?
So the way it's scheduled right now, um, we have, uh, I will present to you the ca, we will present the capital budget recommendation. You will have the full budget, balanced budget recommendation, but you will not have, uh, Courtney or, um, Remy will present, uh, the rest of the budget after that date. So we will not get through to approval before I leave.
So with, with that thought in mind, what is the possibility of you staying as a consultant until we finish the budget process? Cause I mean, there's still some important things that are going to need to be considered, and I know you've already tendered, you know, your resignation date, but are you...
Retirement.
Retirement, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, but yeah, so is, is that something that we need to discuss maybe off, outside of this, this, this forum?
Yeah, I don't know that this, tonight would be the time to have that discussion.
But will she ever return? No, she's never returned. And your fate is still unlearned. We may ride forever, meet the streets of Boston. Never mind.
Tree lighting.
Okay, village clerk's report?
Hi. So, uh, just a few events coming up. We have Movie in the Park on June twentieth, starts at dusk, um, at East Harbor Park, and it will be Wild Robots. Um, so come out and hang out for that. And then we also have, right after that, June twenty-fourth, we have Ride the Wave, the Hokusai event that will boot be in downtown Ontarioville at five thirty P M on the twenty-fourth. So come out, hang out, um, and check out that Hokusai flyer because we have the park district and the library also kind of contributing into that, so everybody's kind of doing stuff.
Can I have, um, Courtney add a couple?
Absolutely.
Take this opportunity to fill in some of the other things we're doing for that?
Yeah. Yeah.
You came off vacation today just to dress us.
Yeah, I did. Welcome back. So for the Ride the Wave event, it's going to be, uh, at a Ontarioville Plaza. The plan is to have a Japanese drumming group come and they'll do some traditional drumming as well as traditional dance. And then we'll be unveiling the mural that was created by a local Naperville artist. Uh, the, the artist actually created murals for every community partner, uh, that's working with the museum. And then we're also hoping to have Zen Ramen there as a restaurant. They'll be selling some of their food, and that's, that's the event.
And then the passport. Do you want to talk about like the other things that we're doing?
Yeah, so if you attend, if you go to the...
Sorry, can I, before you move on to the next thing? So the mural, is it like on the side of, is it permanent? Is it movable?
So, uh, what did I, it's, uh, it's printed on to like a thin sheet. It's very similar to what you had for the War Hall event.
Oh.
Um, so it's not permanent on any like building or anything like that. Uh, but we're also hoping to have some of the art, Hokusai's work on our village hall windows as well as vinyl.
On the windows?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, okay.
Also similar to War Hall.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
And then, yeah, so if you were to go attend the exhibit, uh, at the museum, you would be given, they, it's their program, but it has, uh, ads for each community partner, and it's kind of treated like a passport. So then if you go to visit those different communities and you see their mural, you'll get a stamp, and then I believe that they're doing something where if you get X number of stamps, uh, they do some, the museum does something for you. So we'll have, uh, we have an advertisement in this program, we have a stamp, and we're hoping that people will come out and take a look at the mural.
Thank you. And for the, um, and thank you, Courtney. And for the event, we'll only, um, you said Zen Ramen, uh, would be providing, uh, food for sale. I'm, in my head, I'm imagining like a, like a food truck or something, but...
No, so the idea was to use a local restaurant and, and also a local Japanese restaurant because the artist Hokusai, that's a Japanese artist, uh, and Zen Ramen is actually our own, currently our only Japanese-style restaurant in town.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Kristy, were you finished?
I am done.
You're done? Corporation council report?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee reports, trustee Alba?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think we've heard plenty from you tonight, so I'll pass.
Are you saying we've had a fill of you already?
Seems like it.
Yeah, okay, very good. Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes, um, first, um, June is, uh, Immigrant Heritage Month, and celebrating, celebrating this is not, you know, just an immigrant's duty, right? It falls on all of us as our bloodlines mean that someone in our family came or immigrated to the United States. And celebrating this means that we're not only celebrating our history, our resilience and determination, but that we're also standing firm against those who would demonize immigration as has been the rhetoric as of recent. Um, so I want to let you know that the Historic Committee and the C I D C Committee are working together for an August event right around our, our, uh, village anniversary. Um, also attended the, uh, retirement of Jay Olbrich. He was a volunteer with Hannover Township for fifteen years. He, he, uh, drove the bus, um, I think it was five days new when he backed it up and messed it up, but, um, he used to drive the bus and he would deliver food to our, our elderly and differently-abled persons that couldn't come to the food pantry. Um, he's an amazing, amazing gentleman here in town, so, um, I attended that, um, with our supervisor, Brian, there. Um, the Historic Committee had a historic event because we gave away three plaques honoring, uh, three locations in town, three buildings that are historic, that are, have been here for a very long time. But in addition, Mayor, thank you for also getting the plaques to the church and the parsonage, so that was a total of five. They got placked. So that was the...
I gave them screws.
You gave them the screws? You found them?
I found them.
Oh, my God. Um, we had special screws we bought for them. They have floor mats, they're really beautiful. They're like earrings. Um, but anyway, uh, so thank you for that. That was very exciting that we got them up and, and, um, the business owners were there and, and I loved seeing them talk to each other and being excited about what Ontarioville Plaza could be for them, so, and now with this event that, uh, you spoke about, it's going to be great. So this is great. Um, and then finally, I won't take a lot from this because this is more to yes means a trustee Ben Colley's, um, report, but we did, uh, participate in DuPage River Sweep. And I know that that area has four entities that have ownership over it, is that right? Is it four? But is there some way that, we, we worked hard, I mean, I found a jack and a knife, you know, and I kept digging and I found bags and bags of clothes that were buried under there. And, um, I mean, we could go back and, and, uh, it was so sad to see the little burrows just covered in liquor bottles, and so the little animals couldn't get in. So we removed a lot of debris. I mean, we worked really hard and trustee, uh, Alba was there as well. Um, and so I'm wondering, is there any way that we can have no dumping signs there? I know that the property might not belong necessarily to us, but as a good steward of the land, is that something that we can look at? Um, because it's gonna, I mean, we could, there is a garbage can there, there's a big one, but I believe it belongs to business, right? Um, but if we can look at a no dumping sign, just as the village of Hannover Park, I think that would help greatly.
I fully support that.
Yeah. We'll look at that.
Yeah. Um, I, I honestly think we could go back and continue working there. We did a big, big difference. We may have an ordinance, okay.
I think she's speaking to the sign, though.
But I, and I think we, we discussed the ordinance, trustee Ben Colley may, may want to talk about it or not, I'm not sure, but we did discuss that, but there needs to be something out there, you know, punishable by law, you know? Stop dumping. So that's the end of my report. Um, that's it, thank you.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir, I am sure.
Thank you, trustee Gutierrez. Um, I did share, uh, a few of you opportunities, you know, on the, on the committee side, if you know some folks, uh, worked with me, worked with clerk, um, uh, you know, those that have weak attendance.
Oh, yes, yeah, we will.
Yeah, there's, there's folks, uh...
There's folks interested in historic and also in C I D C. I just need to get them to sign it.
Yeah, so I encourage you to let me know.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Trustee Porter?
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, let me thank, uh, Tom for, uh, his very, uh, insightful comments about the grocery tax. I particularly found, uh, your suggestion about the twenty-twenty-seven sunset to be intriguing, uh, and interesting, uh, although at this point in time, because we are looking to, uh, approve it as an agenda item, it would have to come off and be rewritten, and there would be a lot needed to be done. Uh, had I had that suggestion from you two, three weeks ago, I think I might have wanted to have a, a more robust discussion about, uh, doing the sunset, but nevertheless, thank you for your insightful, uh, observation. Uh, very much appreciated on that. Um, Juneteenth event is coming up on the twenty-first of June on Saturday, and let me thank everyone who, uh, was so agreeable to canceling our village meeting on the nineteenth, uh, which is the actual Juneteenth day is June nineteenth. Uh, it slipped past me and, and as I'm sure everyone on the dais, but, uh, again, my heartfelt thanks to everyone for being agreeable to moving our, our meeting date to the twenty-third, uh, so that we can observe, uh, and commemorate June nineteenth. Uh, very much appreciated. It's going to be a great event. We have, uh, the Funk Brothers Band who has thrilled us in the past. We have the forty-plus Double Dutch, uh, club, and these ladies are all forty-plus, and the things that they do with Double Dutch ropes is amazing. Uh, they're just phenomenal and, and very, uh, very entertaining. Uh, we have our DJ will be back. Also, we, uh, are providing, uh, will be making available, uh, barbecue, uh, ribs, uh, chicken, uh, uh, hot links and Polish, Polish and, and all of those type of things. So the food is going to be amazing. Uh, we're praying for good weather, uh, and, uh, we just encourage everyone to come out that's from twelve to four on the, uh, twenty-first, that's Saturday, at our ball fields at twelve-hundred Sycamore, uh, in Hannover Park. Uh, I did want to find out, who do I talk to in order to have access to post our event on the scrolling Hannover Park signs? Uh, I, Courtney, okay, I'll give you a call and we can have that discussion, uh, to, to utilize the sign to, uh, highlight, uh, the event, uh, that's coming up.
That should be a given.
Hmm?
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, okay, I just need to know who the head honcho was. Now I got it, it's Ms. Courtney. Okay, all good. Okay. Uh, and, uh, that concludes my report. I think that, uh, you know, there are a lot of, uh, significant groups, uh, that are being supported, and I just want to offer my, uh, support for Pride Month, uh, and, and all of those who are in that L G B T Q plus community, uh, that Hannover Park is a supporting community, uh, and we, uh, stand you, uh, and we support you, uh, in, in all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb, and, uh, I do want to express, I'm going to miss you, Juneteenth event, because I'm, where am I, in Florida? I think I'm at the U S Conference of Mayors at times, so...
You'll be missed, but we'll read your proclamation in, in your seat.
Will you do that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, grab.
No, the village hall is not closed.
Yeah. I have to include you, Bernie. Under change of date.
Do we not have that as a holiday?
It is not a village holiday.
We're not meeting on the...
Right.
I don't, if the village holds, it's not a force.
No.
Thank you, Herb. Trustee Kunkel?
Uh, no report.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Ben Colley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I'd, I'd like to echo, uh, the sentiments of, of trustee Porter. Thank you to the board for, um, uh, scheduling, moving June nineteenth meeting to June twenty-third. Um, I know that Juneteenth is a federal holiday, but equivalent of July fourth, uh, Independence Day, and so we wouldn't have a board meeting on July fourth, just like we wouldn't have one on Juneteenth. Uh, I guess I also wasn't aware that it's not a village holiday, so I think I would like to, I think I would appreciate having a, a conversation about, um, maybe exploring avenues in which that can be a, a village holiday in the future. I, I would greatly appreciate that, that conversation. It's strategic planning, because we have that.
Yeah, we have strategic planning coming, and those are kind of items like the Hiji stuff in our ordinances that we want to clean up, so...
Okay.
Keep that in your pocket.
Okay, okay.
It'll come up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm sure you'll make sure it comes up.
Yeah, yes, yes, Mayor.
Anything else?
Um, I'd also like to wish those in the L G B T Q plus, uh, community a happy Pride Month. Um, moving along, uh, trustee Gutierrez also mentioned that, previously mentioned that we had, um, a River Sweep event. This was the first time that the environmental committee was able to hold this event in several years, um, and it was, um, our largest turnout yet. Uh, we were really pleased with, um, the amount of people who were able to come out, take part in, in beautifying, uh, our town. Um, but I also echo, um, uh, many of the sentiments that trustee Gutierrez provided, uh, which is that it, it wasn't enough, we, we, we did our best as a group, we, we really did, um, but it, it wasn't enough, and so I'm, I'm hoping we can explore, um, different ideas in which we would curb some of the, uh, trash and debris that ultimately ends up along that riverbank and ultimately ends up in, in our, um, in our waterways. Um, I was able to attend, uh, the swearing-in ceremony for the Carol Stream, uh, Library Board, uh, so they have a few new library board members and public libraries are, uh, near and dear to my heart. I, um, I spent over a decade working at a public library, and my mother's a librarian, and I just think they're important spaces, so I, I really appreciated, um, uh, that swearing-in ceremony. I was also able to attend, uh, the, the very fine Memorial Day event, um, that our, um, Veterans Committee put on, so thank you very much, trustee Kunkel, and, uh, was also able to attend, um, uh, the Memorial Day event held in the village of Streamwood. Um, uh, the la, uh, sorry, I need to... So on May twenty-seventh, um, so, May seventh, the environmental committee held, um, our monthly meeting, and May twenty-seventh was my last meeting as, um, board liaison, uh, so I'm handing out over the reins to trustee Broccolino, who, um, uh, has already been serving, um, on the committee, and, um, uh, it's, it's been an honor to serve in that role. I've, I've seen it go through, through many changes, and we've just, over the past couple of years, been able to breathe new life into, uh, many of our initiatives, and I know that, um, many of those, you know, great things will, um, still occur under the, the leadership of trustee Broccolino. Um, and, uh, and so more, more recently, I, I have, I am now the, the Jawa, um, uh, board alternate, and so I was able to also attend my first Jawa meeting, um, a week or two ago, and, um, was, was able to learn a little bit more about the DuPage Water Commission's, um, proposed plans to, um, uh, essentially, uh, how can I say this? You know, in... you know what I'm trying to say? Get our, we move forward, I'm sorry, I can't talk. We would move forward with a proposal that would allow us to get water directly from Lake Michigan versus going through the city of Chicago. Sorry. Okay. Yes, a big, wanted to provide my sincere congratulations to Backstreet Barbecue and Sushi, which is a beautiful new restaurant located at 1555 Irving Park Road. I understand that it was a multi-year project, and the owners are very happy with how it came out. And the food there is delicious, so I would encourage all of our residents to try out that new restaurant. Last thing I would like to briefly mention. I apologize. Thing that I had. My sincere apologies. My thing exited out. Okay, I was having, I've had actually several conversations with some of our homeowners who have gotten their property tax bill, and they've noticed the jump, right? And I think, I think, so it just very much seems as though here in the Village of Hannover Park, we continue to do our part to either not raise property tax or lower property tax. And year after year, we continue in this steadfast fashion because we don't want to raise property tax on our homeowners. But they still see these increases year after year after year, and it's gotten to the point where it's almost unbearable. You know, I'm not a homeowner yet. I'd love to be a homeowner in the state of Illinois, but it almost seems like an impossible task because of the property tax. And so, I just recently became aware of the fact that there are several municipalities and townships that have, following the November 2024 vote on the referendum question that asked if there should be a 3% essentially surcharge on those that make over a million dollars so that this, the revenue collected from that could go into the property relief tax fund. So, following that referendum vote, I recently found out that there are some municipalities and townships in the Chicagoland area that have already looked at supporting an advisory referendum question on the March 17th, 2026 primary election ballot. And if I may, I would just like to read what the question says. It says, "Shall the state of Illinois, which has the second highest property taxes in the nation, deliver annual property tax rebates to the more than 3 million residential property taxpayers in Illinois as provided in the Illinois Property Tax Relief Fund Act of 2019?" And I guess, I'm bringing this up because I would like for us to consider this as a board. I truly believe that as a village, we are doing our part year after year after year, and we're doing right by our residents. And I'm just not sure that that's happening across the board, and so... So, this is, so one already passed in Thornton Township. As a board, the, and I'm looking at an article, and I'd be happy to provide this to you. But Thornton Township reviewed this and said, "We would like to have this as an advisory referendum in 2026." And there's also municipalities that are also having this conversation as well. And I just think that this is a man-made issue, right? The high property taxes, and there must be a way to address this in a meaningful way. And so, I bring that up because I hope that we can have a real discussion about that at a later date. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
I'm curious with the audio. Very good. Trustee Broccolino?
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about the Apary Open House this Saturday, June 7th, 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock. It is at a new location, 2500 Army Trail Road. And we got some books to give away and some crafts for the kids to do. That's it.
Any Bernstein prevention? Apary.
Apary, yeah. I was wondering if we can also post it on Facebook, social media?
1 to 4 Saturday?
Yes.
Oh, I ran out of trustees. Oh, my goodness. Well, I'd like to, before I move to go to executive session, June 11th is the gala, my sayonara as president of Northwest Minnesot Conference. Love to see you all there. Motion to go to executive session, Section 2C2, collective bargaining, Section 2C6, setting a price for the sale of property owned by the village of Hannover Park. Will we be returning afterwards?
No.
Okay. We will not be returning afterwards?
Well, Bernie? Is there the potential of coming back with some action that would need to happen here out of that second item? Okay.
With that?
Can I get a motion?
A motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Cake.
No, I have to do that, no. You can't do that yet. Trustee Gutierrez? Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Benkoli?
Yes.
Trustee Broccolino?
Yes.
And trustee Albeck?
Yes.
Now we can make a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Eight forty.
Cake. Cake.